And welcome to the February meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Niskiuna. My name is Keith Frary. I'm the chair of the board. We are going to, which I will explain in a minute, have a slight change to our procedure. So our order of cases. But first, if we could call the roll.
Mr. Hope?
Here.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Mr. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Here.
Chairperson Frary?
Here. First order of business is the minutes. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance. I know we do have one correction, and I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Green.
Mr. Chairman, at the January 18th, 2023 meeting, I was physically present. The minutes indicate I was virtual. So I would move to strike the word virtual so that the record clearly reflects that I was here in person.
Okay, we will do that and make that correction. Are there any other corrections, changes that are needed for the minutes from the January meeting? Hearing none, I would ask if there's a motion to accept the minutes.
I make a motion to approve it.
Mr. Latif, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Daley has seconded. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
abstain.
Mr. Daley?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Frary?
Yes, the January meeting minutes are accepted as revised. Do we have our second applicant? Oh, okay. Thank you. So we're going to take the second case first. We're attempting to accommodate our first applicant who is delayed because he gets off work a little later. So if you could come forward before we start, just so you're aware, the, this board has a set criteria that they're required to follow. It's a little different from some of the other boards that you may or may not have been in front of. Many of the questions that the board members will ask are geared towards the criteria that we have to meet and satisfied to make our decision. So if you're confused at all, please let us know. But that's why some of the questions may sound a little unusual or different from what you're used to. And just so I'm clear, you, are you here representing the applicant or are you the applicant?
I am the applicant, but we do not own the property yet.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's, I think, been a little confusion as of recent, so I just want to make sure. If you could introduce-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We'll have to have Linda read the second case. Would you read it?
No. Go ahead. Read, read the second case, please.
Okay, "The appeal of Jeffrey and Janet Konas for a variance from section 220-10A and section 220-52A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna as it applies to the property at 31 East Street, Niskiuna, New York, located in the RR80 rural residential zoning district to convert a portion of a 10, a pre-existing non-conforming interior storage building to office space and a bathroom." Section 220-10 District Regulations A, RR Rural Residential District of the Niskiuna zoning code lists the permitted principal uses, permitted accessory uses, and special principal uses allowed in the zoning district. General office use is not permitted in the RR80 zoning district. Section 220-52 Changes in Nonconforming Uses A states, "Nonconforming use shall be changed to other than conforming use," shall, no nonconforming use shall be changed to other than conforming use for the district in which it is situated. The property is currently a pre-existing nonconforming use with 100% of the interior area dedicated to dry interior storage. As proposed, 356 square feet of interior storage will be changed to 32 feet by 10 feet general office area and 6 feet by 6 feet bathroom area. As proposed, a portion of pre-existing nonconforming interior storage building is proposed to change to a secondary nonconforming use, general office. Therefore, a use variance is required. Twenty-four notices were mailed, zero responses. We received a county referral and a planning board referral.
The county deferred to local consideration with an advisory note that the site plan should identify location and engineering details for the proposed septic system. And the planning board on February 13th, 2023, made the following recommendations that affect on the comprehensive plan. The planning board voted 7-0 that there is effect on the comprehensive plan because the proposal expands the current pre-existing nonconforming use to include a use that is not a permitted principal use, permitted accessory use, or special principal use in the RR80 zone. Suitability of use, the planning board voted 6-1 that the use variance was suitable for the area. The board noted the proposal includes a small, low-impact business that would not include any walk-in customers, is less intense than the current use, and as shown in the site plan, will improve the current condition of the property. The board also noted that this is unique property that is not well-suited to uses listed in the RR zone. The one board member who voted that the proposed use was not suitable expressed concerns about the ramifications granting of the variance could have with regards to future tenants and overall expansion of commercial use there. The planning board voted 6-1 that the ZBA grant the use variance for the reasons noted above. The dissenting voter reiterated the concern that granting the use variance could have a negative impact should a change in tenant occur. The CAC did review this project on February 1st, 2023. Their findings are in your packet. They, the CAC basically discussed that the spaces partially used as an office space would be a new nonconforming use in the RR zone. However, given the current use of the property is nonconforming and the new proposal is less intensive, the use would not be burdensome to the community. With only a handful of people working there during the day, the bigger crews would only be stopping by to pick up supplies. It was determined that there would not be as many people coming and going as there has been. Couple of things they noted that were important to them was keeping the green space on site, adding further trees, flowers, and to buffer the neighboring residents, making sure that the septic system was reviewed so it had little impact on the neighbors. They felt the traffic would be slightly better because these are smaller trucks than the current ones. And because of the proximity to the Mohawk Hudson Bike Hike Trail, they wanted to increase the landscape buffer to there. I don't know if anybody has any questions on this, on the CAC.
If you could for us, Laura, could you tell us currently what this is, this pre-existing nonconforming use is at the property?
Okay, yeah, so originally, the structure, I think, was built by the fire department possibly, and it housed fire trucks. Then the town of Niskiuna owned it, and it housed trucks that were used for plowing and things like that. The town sold it, and I actually don't know what the first tenant was, and this may even be the second or the third. But currently, right now, there's a concrete forms business that runs from there with pretty heavy-duty trucks that come and go. The only note is that that use isn't fully permitted by the town. They're under steps for enforcement from us. But currently, there's a concrete, concrete forms business that is there. And because we haven't really reviewed it before, planning board, our understanding is that possibly they also maintain trucks at the site. But we don't, we don't have a full-
So the original use by the town was for storage of heavy equipment, that type of thing?
Yeah, materials. Mm-hmm, yeah.
That facility was sold to someone?
Mm-hmm.
And then is that the person that occupies the building currently, or are they leasing it to someone?
When the town sold it, the first occupant was impacted by the takings that happened when the, when the state went in and did the roundabout. East Street used to connect directly into Balltown Road, and they made a cul-de-sac at the end of East Street, and they took part of this property. And so that applicant sold the property prior to ever having any approvals with the town. I believe to the, the concrete forms person that is, is operating from there now.
Okay, so the, the concrete form company or whoever they are is the owner currently?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Just a quick question, Laura, on the same thing before we close on that. So this was not reviewed by the town, that business, and was not approved?
The concrete operating business, correct.
Okay, so, so even that business that exists right now has not been reviewed by the town or approved?
Correct. During COVID, there was a lot of directives from the governor to be, not enforce things as strictly because there was trying to be a lot of cushion and grace to people during a tough time. And following COVID, I think we, we did try enforcement once and had an issue with serving the papers. But I would say that probably that, that property's been operating with a concrete business, at least that I know, like at least four or five years.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just have clarification on the standard that we're applying tonight, more specifically with respect to the first part of the standard reasonable return. And the, since the applicant is not the current owner, it would be my understanding that we would be applying that standard to the current owner of the property. So in other words, the competent financial evidence that would have to be provided to us demonstrating an inability to get a reasonable return on the property would be the owner's inability to get a reasonable return on the property. Is that my, is my understanding accurate?
That is the legal standard.
So it is the owner. This is, this is very similar to the veterinary hospital that we dealt with some time ago, that type of thing, which was, even though the applicant was a third party that was purchasing the building.
So I, I just, for the benefit of the applicant as well, that she understands that the, the burden is on her to prove the current owner's inability to receive a reasonable return on the property through competent financial evidence.
And, and we'll talk about that in a second. So I, you are correct, Mr. Hope.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just like clarification from counsel. Because this is a pre-existing nonconforming use, which was, I believe, storage, the only thing that could go into this without the need of some type of variance would be storage, correct?
Yes.
You would know, I don't know what the code says as far as what our permitted use is in the RR80 zone.
Yeah, the, you're correct. And the majority, and the applicant can also speak to this, but the majority of the proposal is to maintain the storage. So I would say probably 80 to 90% of the building is, is maintaining that current nonconforming use, which is the interior storage, which is allowed. But because they wanted to add the office, we didn't think that we could allow that because it's changing the interior storage to the office.
No, and that was the second part of my question. Because of the, what, even though it may be 10 or 20% that changes the, the use, that's what brings us under needing a use variance?
Correct, yeah. Well, and the bathroom because it actually doesn't currently have a water or sewer.
All right, understood.
Okay. Laurie, is there going to be any flammable stuff in that storage building?
Well, that's, that's a question we're going to ask her once we give her a chance to-
Oh, okay.
To, to, to explain her, her application and whatnot. So hang on to that.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Please introduce yourself. Give us your name, where you live, why you're here, and tell us a little bit about your, your application before us.
Well, good evening. My name is Janet Konas. I live in North Creek. Our main business is in Warrensburg, New York. That's our main office. As of right now, we do rent a building in Albany on Vetrano Road. This came up because the rents are getting ridiculous, and we happened to come across this building. We are northeast underlayments and spray foam business. Underlayments is a self-leveling concrete business. We do not deal in forms or anything like that. It is a dry powder that we have to store inside, and it's mixed with water on the job sites. Our, most of our, like right now, we're working at Crossgates. Most of our large jobs, our materials are delivered directly to the job. Mainly, if we're bringing in our materials, we bring them with our trucks. We have gooseneck trailers, and we have, no, make, three Ford 350s. Ford, yeah, I've got pictures in the packets there. I don't know trucks. And our other business is a spray foam business, and most of our spray foam trucks are up north. But we do keep one down here. Once again, the chemicals for that have to be inside, and we would store one truck and one trailer down here. The chemicals that are, which I think the sheets are in there that describe the chemical that we use, for our use, it's a less dense form, but it is the same foam that you have, like in the dashboards of your cars or, it's nothing. It's not hazardous. The only people it's hazardous to would be our spray foam guys when they mix the two together and they're using it. So we happened to come across this building down here, and we became very interested in it. One, because of the price, and two, it's an easy access for us to get to main routes. We gave up traveling all over the United States a long time ago as we got older. And we mainly serve Schenectady, Albany, Gilderlin, you know, stay-down locals. So the guys don't want to go out of town anymore. There is, like I said, no bathroom in there. We do have an estimator that would be on site. So he obviously would need a bathroom. We have a salesman who would come in, get his messages, go over any plans that came in by email to do the bidding on that and send that out and go see customers. We would have a crew, which is a sprayer and his helper, that would come in, load their truck, and leave. They would come back, and they leave probably by 7:00. They would come back anywhere between 3:00, nobody works till 5:00. They would be back 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock and leave. The estimator, Brian, usually leaves by 4:00. Sometimes he stays till 5:00. Salesmen's never there until 2:00 would be a miracle. We have no signs. Our building now that we have up north in Warrensburg, we have nothing written on the building. We don't take walk-in people. It's not a walk-in type business. We store our trucks out back. We're guestimating right now. We've got an estimate from our septic guy, which he's going to get going on it, you know, once we get our approvals. It would be, let me just see his estimate here. The engineering for the survey is about 8,000. He quoted us. The back wall of the building was hit by some type of boom up near the top as you're facing the building on the right-hand side, and all the bricks have been smashed. They've given us a quote of 32,000 to fix the wall. Right now, we have a guesstimate of roughly about 5,000 to put shrubs and flowers down both sides of the building towards the bike and towards the other side because on the far side, there's a blue house, and that can be seen right straight through. So we're going to put hedges, trees, and flowers all down that side. We're also going to mix it down the far side by the bike path because right now, that doesn't look too good either. And then out front, as you come into the circle, there's where they tried to make a stone wall. I'm assuming it was some type of garden. As of right now, they have decided that they think that's the best place for the septic system. But as we get approvals, then they're going to come in and actually start looking at it. And they've guessed that to be 15,000 for the septic and the water. They've guessed the building to put the, there are going to be half-walls. It's not a wall going all the way up and sealing off the bathroom and the office. It's a, like a partition, and it'll be the bathroom and the office. And they've guessed that at roughly about 15,000. And then we have to redo the concrete floor in there. Thank God, we do concrete, and that's 35,000. And that's roughly what we're looking at for numbers right now. We will have nothing stored outside. Our stuff has to be inside. It can't be outside storage. And the only things that would be out there during the day would be the cars for the people that are there coming and going, except for Brian, who's there all day. We don't work on weekends. We'd never get anybody to work on weekends. And the hours of operation would be 7:00, mostly to 4:00. Maybe we might hit somebody that would be there till 5:00, but that would be a rarity. Definitely would never go past 5:00, ever. And what questions can I answer?
Ms. Konas, correct?
Yes.
Ms. Konas, so you, you would have one, one truck and one, a tractor and a trailer, I assume?
A truck and a trailer.
A truck and a trailer?
Yes.
That would be stored outside?
Yes, in the back of the building.
And inside would be the storage of materials that you use in the course of your business?
Correct.
Okay. You said your current operation is out of Warrensburg?
Correct.
Do you handle the same territory now that you potentially would if you had this? Is that going to change at all?
No.
Okay. Your estimator is somebody who goes out and bids on jobs, looks at jobs, that type of thing?
Correct.
Why do you need an office? Why can't you operate out of the office in Warrensburg?
He doesn't need an office as much as the estimator does.
Okay, but back to my question. The estimator-
Oh, Brian.
You have four, just hang with me a second. You have three, four, five, six jobs. Your estimators doing municipal bids, things like that that they're aware of. But why can't the est, and those are all done on-site? They have to go on-site, do the estimating, come back, write up a bid, write up a quote, those kind of things. Why can't that be done in Warrensburg?
Because we're too far away. Gas is too expensive.
You're talking about one person, one estimator, driving a car, right?
Mm-hmm.
Which is what you do right now, right?
Yeah, but right now, he works out of Vetrano in Albany.
Okay.
And we have another estimator that works out of Warrensburg that goes north.
Okay, you can see that, that, and one of the things that, that I, I want to see that we can do is, is if this is, and I'm sure either counsel or Laura will tell me if I'm wrong, but i-if this is simply used for storage, no office, no bathroom, then you don't need a variance, right? You don't need a use variance, even though something is stored outside, like a truck? You wouldn't need a use variance?
Correct. That's true, but we want to use it the way we're using Vetrano. We want to get rid of that and move it all to Niskiuna.
Are you paying to use Vetrano?
Pardon?
Are you paying to use Vetrano?
Yes. We're renting it. 1,400.
A month, a year?
Oh, sorry, a month.
Okay.
And every six months, it goes up.
Where does your estimator live?
Clifton Park. Oh, the, our salesman lives in Clifton Park. Our estimator lives in Middleburg.
Okay, as someone who is, whose life is now operating out of an in-home office, is there some reason that, that these people can't just work out of their house?
We prefer them to be at the office to know that the work is getting done.
I prefer to be at the office too, but the issue is, is we're trying to find a reason that you don't need a variance.
I hear you.
So, because what the stumbling block is with the use variance is the office and the bathroom.
Mm-hmm, true.
So I'm, I'm just trying to understand for myself.
Like for now, right now, we have a big job going on at Crossgates, and even though you have contracts and everybody knows what's in the contracts, what they provide and what you provide, don't necessarily coincide when you get on the job. And so for the last week, we'll say, Brian being the older adult out of our crew has been spending a lot of time at Crossgates getting through things that don't require us to have downtime and overages, which is a quicker trip than coming from Middleburg.
And, and you sound like somebody who's, who's very familiar with the, a, a construction site, right? Why couldn't your estimator operate out of a job trailer on the construction site?
Because we don't have one there.
Well, considering the prices-
That's an additional cost.
Considering the prices that we're looking at here, wouldn't it be a lot cheaper to just have a job trailer, take your truck and?
Well, it's also an asset to our company.
Hang on just a second.
Yes.
To just transport that to a job site and have your estimator, again, this office and this bathroom is what's-
Hanging things up.
Hanging things up from you being able to. You've obviously been up to this location, correct, this building?
Oh, yes.
You would agree with me that it is smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood?
Yes.
There is not another business present up there. Closest ones are probably Stewart's down the street.
Yes, probably.
Would you agree with me that the presence of a building would change the character of this neighborhood?
No, because the building is already there, and us going in there definitely would make it look better.
Well, let's, let's talk about that. You said you're going to have an estimator who's going to be there. How, how much of, of the day would typically-
Brian would be there all day.
Okay, you have one person all day, and your salespeople are in and out?
One person would be in in the morning and then out, possibly coming back in the late afternoon.
But your crew would have to get the truck, get the trailer, get the materials, right?
Correct.
So there's going to be traffic in and out at some point in time?
In in the morning, back in the afternoon.
Unless the, somebody messed up and you need more materials, right?
No, they have a count on the material they need.
Okay, and where, where are you bringing that material from Warrensburg as it is?
No, we would, no, we get a delivery. We know what, we have a count of how much closed and open sale we need, and that's delivered down there.
For each job?
No, we have a list of when the jobs are coming up, and we usually know how much to drop off for a month.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying is to drop off, meaning you're doing drop-offs at the job site or at the storage?
If there's small jobs, we drop them off at the site, at our office, that site. If they're big jobs and they get dropped off at wherever the location is, we just had a big job in Warren, Vermont. So everything was dropped off in Warren, Vermont.
So I'm just trying to understand why you're storing materials at this building when you're, you're presumably figuring out how much you need for a job site and either-
Because we don't always know. We don't always, we have schedules to keep. But if we have a day open and somebody calls and it's a last-minute job, we have to have chemical there to go with. We don't have it Monday through Friday. We always have pop-in jobs.
And for pop-in jobs, where are you getting your materials now, from Warrensburg?
Yeah. There should be pictures there of our Warrensburg site.
Mr. Daley, did you get your question answered, or you want to ask it again?
I'm going to ask another question. At Crossgate Shopping Center, do you have a field trailer there?
No.
Everything is done inside?
Yes. Our, right here at Crossgates, we're doing the floors, and that is a powder that we bring in there. The powder cannot be outside. If it gets wet, it's destroyed.
Okay, so there's no place that you could supply, keep your supplies in the building? They don't give you a part of the building where you can put supplies?
Our supplies over at Crossgates are stored inside, yes.
Right.
And all of those supplies that- And all of those supplies that we were bringing to Crossgate were delivered directly to Crossgate.
Right.
It never hit our office in, at Patrano Drive.
Wouldn't it be financially better to have the material dropped off at Crossgate? Then bring it down here and then bring it back up there?
Yes, when we have large jobs, we usually have this stuff shipped directly to the job. But in some cases where we might be doing like a showroom floor, in that case, they will shut down their showroom for a specific time, so we can't leave our material there. We have to bring it in for the short period of time that they shut it down for us to go in and do it.
Right, but they give you, they give you space where you can put your material?
When they've shut their business down for us to go in.
Right, but you still have space for your material?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Other questions by the board?
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, just for clarification. There was an indication that this was a permitted use. This isn't a permit, the storage is not a permitted use at the location, correct?
It's because it's pre-existing non-conforming, that doesn't, a tenant, it can change tenants and still remain pre-existing non-conforming.
But it's not permitted, it's just a non-conforming use. So it's permitted by virtue of the fact that it's non-conforming?
Right, interior storage, yeah.
Okay. And Ms. Conus, you're familiar with this, I don't know if you are familiar. Are you familiar with the standard that we're applying here tonight in terms of evaluating your application for a use variance?
Yes.
Okay, you know that there's a four-part test. Mr. Ferrari was asking you questions about the neighborhood and the, you know, the proposed impact of, you know, the bathroom and the office on the neighborhood and surroundings. And that kind of impacts two of the, two of the four factors that we have to, to address tonight, or you have a burden to prove tonight. The one factor I haven't heard anything about, and that was why I questioned, had my question at the beginning, was in terms of establishing a basis for the variance, you have to have competent financial evidence. And in this case, it would be the competent financial evidence of barbaric concrete that they could not--
He did, there should be a letter in there that he's been trying to sell the building and every time he comes to the town, nobody will continue with a sale because of what they have to go through.
Okay, well, let me just, let me just finish my thought process. So in terms of establishing competent financial evidence, in my mind at least, we would need to know things that I don't see anywheres in the application in terms of what the purchase price of the building was, what it was appraised at. You know, was there an appraisal done of the building? The five people that were interested in the property, have they, I'm just, I don't know that you have answers for all of these questions, maybe you do. But of the five people interested in the property, have there been other contracts? Has the property been under contract before? Have there been offers made on the property? Those are all things that, you know, I would need to know in order to establish that there's competent financial evidence that a reasonable return could not be achieved through a sale in which the use for the building was preserved.
Our contract should be in there and the other ones walked away.
Okay, because I see in the, in the application, there's other commercial structures presumably-- let me just finish. Presumably the other commercial structures were added into the application to establish what you would have to pay to get a comparable building and you're trying to demonstrate that they are significantly higher than the contract that you have, you presently made, you know, you're presently under contract for. Obviously, I understand you detailed at the beginning, some of the additional improvements you would have to make to the property to make it feasible, but I guess I'm still confused as to, you know, again, I have no idea what barbaric concrete bought this property for. Presumably they bought it to use it as a storage facility and what, you know, why they cannot continue to use it as a storage facility as it's currently being contemplated or alternatively, you know, what efforts they've made to try to, to sell the property while maintaining it as a storage facility. I assume you don't have that information.
No, but I believe they're under violation with the town right now, aren't they?
That's correct. They really are not permitted to store their concrete forms on the outside of the building the way that they have now.
So again, I understand the motivation that they have to want to sell the building given that, you know, the issues they're having with the town. Again, I just don't see anywheres in the application the competent financial evidence that we typically expect with the use variance, because the use variance is much stricter than the other type of variance that we frequently deal with, an area variance in which we can, we can balance various factors. This is unique to a use variance. It's not present in an area, area variance application. And with respect to some of the other factors, you know, you've provided information to me with respect to the impact on the community and whether this property is in fact unique, which it sounds to me that certainly an argument could be made that this property is unique and certainly an argument could be made that the, if this use variance was granted, it wouldn't alter the essential character of the neighborhood from my perspective. But again, I'm somewhat hamstrung by the fact that I don't have barbaric concrete here to ask them specific questions with respect to the reasonable return. And it's not as if we can balance the factors and say, well, you made, you got two or three out of four, so we can move forward with the application without demonstrating this. We must demonstrate this in order to be in a position to grant the variance. That's my concern.
I would also like to point out to the board that this building that's there now that's being used daily, all day, has no bathroom facilities. So what do you think they're doing all day?
Again, again, that's a good argument that goes to potentially the, you know, the improvements that you're going to be making to the property. And as I just indicated to you, the, the fact that this property is unique and the fact that, you know, you're going to be making improvements would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. I think I've indicated to you that I'm receptive to those arguments, but--
But I'm not even, even if you don't even consider us, I think that's other, another big problem you guys have right now.
But that's why they, that's why they are having issues with the town, because what you're saying is correct, where do they go? But that's why the town is on them to figure this thing out. So it's got nothing to do with you at this point.
It's got big problems over there.
That would be a question I think that, that one or more of us would like to ask to the company that's in there right now, but they're not here to ask that question.
Yeah, I doubt they will be.
But they already, they already have an issue and the town is not happy with them. So that's something we can't really discuss, except if this person is present.
Yes.
Because the town is aware of what's going on.
See, part of the financial issue is they're operating a business.
Correct.
Presumably they're making money, losing money, whatever the situation may be. And they need to show us that in its current form and its current use, there's some type of undue hardship that could be different if the use variance was granted and an alternative business or changes were made. And that's where we get into this, this financial balancing act of this is what's happening now, this is what could happen, and we've tried, it's not just, we've tried to rent it out. It's, you know, what, what use could they make out of it? That's the problem we have.
And I understand where you guys are coming from and I understand the burden of proof, but we've been in business since 1998. We have the spray foam business, the concrete business. We have Airbnbs, which we take very good care of. Our concrete business up north with our spray foam is in a residential area. Never had one complaint. I can't get him to give me, I have problems with the stuff I do get. I've tried my due diligence, but I can only tell you what we can do. And I know you have burdens of proof and I'm just hoping that you'll see that we would be a definite improvement to what's there and the garbage that's there and we will make the neighborhood better than what's there.
And I was up there today and I saw exactly what you're talking about and none of this that we're saying is, is a reflection on your business.
Oh, I know that.
But we have a lot of residents in this rural residentially zoned area--
Correct.
--who are relying on this board to make sure that a certain criteria is met and we protect the interests of that neighborhood.
Correct.
So I also see on here that there's going to be lighting there, is that right?
Just by the doors.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, let me see if I can--
It gets dark in the winter.
Oh, I--
Before five.
I, I, I'm sure it is. But I'm seeing outs, outward, outside downward lighting on the building in parentheses, a motion sensor.
Yeah, so when you walk up to the doors--
Do you know how many animals there are up there in this particular area?
I live in North Creek. We have it everywhere. We're also going to have heated walkways.
If I may finish, please. So every time Mr. Raccoon or Mr. Skunk or Mr. Deer or Mrs. Deer walks through this area and you have been there, you know how close that blue house is to this building? And the other houses which surround this building, so potentially at nighttime in the winter, there's going to be lights going on and off, on and off, on and off. And I understand why you need them.
But the doorways are on the right-hand side towards the bike path. So it wouldn't be to the other side where the neighbors are.
Well, there's a couple of, there's a couple of houses which are further towards the corner.
The car guy. But the doorway--
A neighbor nonetheless.
Yes, but the doorway is all the way around on the other side. So it wouldn't interfere.
Well, this is a concern we have with a number of variances that we look at, is the, the lighting and especially when you're talking about motion sensor lighting, which is not, we can turn it on at a certain hour, turn it off at a certain hour and control it, can't control it. So there's a number of things. It also says that there's going to be a dumpster for construction debris, dried trash.
Right. So when they're on the job site and they've slit the bags and they've used it, when it comes back, the bags will go into a dumpster.
Okay. So there will be heavy duty, a heavy duty trash hauler that'll need to come up and empty that?
Yes, there's a dumpster there now.
Other questions by the board?
I'm Richard Green, how are you?
Hello?
I'm just, a couple of questions that may seem a little scattershot, but it'll-- thanks. So you had mentioned that you, your company's been in business since 1998?
Yes.
And as you are here this evening, is there any contemplation of how many more years this business would be in operation?
No plans on--
All right. Any plans on selling the business?
No. My husband's passion.
Got it. I was listening to the information that you were sharing with regard to the hours of operation and I hear you, you were indicating from seven in the morning to four, maybe five. It's a business, sometimes, you know, takes a little longer to get things done. Did I hear you correctly that the thought would be that the crews would be leaving at seven in the morning?
Our deal is that all the crews should be gone by seven.
If I can, I'm going to interrupt you because that's, I just needed to get that data point. What time would the crews generally be expected to be there? In other words, I hear you, they should be, have their act together and ready to roll at seven. It's a business.
Well, let's put it this way, my crew this morning that was supposed to leave at seven didn't leave till eight.
It happens. What I'm trying to get at, just for information, is how early are the crews arriving at the work site? Not what time are they leaving, but what time do they get there to gather the crew together and, and do whatever crews do? Perhaps load, load a vehicle or do vehicle inspections, you know, walk around or whatever needs to be done.
We recently put cameras up in Warrensburg so that we can watch them for their punches, because I don't believe any of them. And the earliest I've seen them punch, the earliest I've seen them on camera, not their punches, was 6:32.
All right. And would you expect, would you expect that the, the crews at this location, should this variance be granted, would be showing up around 6:30 in the morning? So in other words, they could get their act together to actually leave the site at around seven?
To be honest with you, no, because the one guy that punches in at 6:32 is usually early and the rest of them, no.
Closer to seven then?
Yes.
Fair enough. With regard to this, I'm just trying to get a picture in my mind, there's no--
No, it's not, ask anything.
You know, I hear a word, crew, I mean, it can be, you know, a crew of two or three or it could be a crew of many more.
Spray foam crew is only two people, a sprayer and his helper, which is more like a safety guy, so they're never alone. The crew for underlayments, depending on the job they're doing, could be three and it could be five.
All right, so at most then around seven in the morning at certain times, depending on the job that needed to be done, maybe five.
Maybe five. I can tell you at the Crossgate right now that we're doing, we pulled some of our spray foam guys that are coming down and we actually have seven on the job.
Thank you very much. I have a fuller picture of those discrete issues that I was curious about.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Laura? Mr. Chairman, I don't know that we have a copy of the letter, at least in my packet, from the current owner that the applicant has referenced several times. I haven't seen it.
There is, in our packet, I see this letter.
Yeah, that's the letter from the--
This is a letter from Hannah Commercial Real Estate.
I don't know that I have that.
That's the letter that the, yeah, it's not in the electronic packet.
We have the standard form contract for purchase and sale.
I have that, yes. I don't have this letter from Hannah.
Yeah, it's probably because it's not in the electronic packet.
Is that what we're referencing, the Hannah letter? Oh, I, I was just--
You do have it?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Conus, I just want to say, I, I understand your frustration here. It sounds from your, like from your perspective, you want to improve the property. You want to resolve some of the existing code issues that the current owner has. And, you know, I'm sympathetic to your, your position here. My concern again is with respect to this variance application, it's either you establish it or you don't. And it's not as if we have the discretion to say, well, the applicant didn't come forward with any evidence to, to meet one of the elements, but we like the project, so we're going to move it forward. You either have to do it or you have to establish the evidence necessary to establish each element independently or you don't. So I guess my question is, do you think more time would allow you to get more information specifically with respect to the financial information that we would need in order-- the financial information that we would need in order to satisfy that concern? Obviously, I'm not in a position to tell you what would happen if we had that information. I'm only one board on the member, and one member on this board, and I don't know that anybody else shares my feelings. But like I said, I, I am somewhat sympathetic to the information that you're relaying to me. And I, I think that, you know, you have established some of the elements of the test. I just, so my question again is posed to you is, would more time help you get the information from the current owner to present to the board?
The letter I got took weeks. I could probably go online to the county records to get the sale when he bought it, which would give me the price that he bought it for.
Well, I, I think, I think we would either need the, the owner or somebody representing the owner to come in with you in order to answer the questions that we would need answered. We would need, you know, some financial information. Typically, people come in with like P and Ls and things like that for us to look at in, in order to, you know, again, competent financial evidence means hard numbers, not just, we, we, you know, we can't sell the property, it's, it's some hard, hard, hard numbers are put forward. So I, I, I think we would need, you know, a representative from Barbaric Concrete in here. And, and for the life of me, you know, from their perspective, I don't know why they wouldn't be interested in coming in here because.
It's to their advantage.
It's to their advantage.
It hasn't been very forthcoming.
Just so you understand, we've dealt with a similar issue very recently where the owner couldn't sell the business and was, was overly exuberant about coming to explain the problems that he had had doing this so that the applicant could attempt to get a use variance. And, and, and that's sort of the way the process works that Mr. Hope's describing is. Our experience has been that the existing owner who's trying to sell the business to you is more than happy to come in and explain his hardship, which is what he really needs to do, so that we can appropriately evaluate it under our criteria. And, and I, I sympathize with you, but again, I think like Mr. Hope, I'm kind of at a loss of why he wouldn't wanna do that.
I understand and hear you.
Seems like you're relieving him of a problem or the owner of a problem.
So, I, I mean, we can entertain the idea of allowing you a little bit more time to do this if you think you can get it. I'm not, I don't wanna extend this. And I'm not saying how it's coming out, but I don't wanna extend it. And, and if you're telling us that that's just not gonna happen, so.
Well.
Cause we wanna work with you, we want to give you the opportunity here. You've made a, a very compelling presentation. But the problem is, as Mr. Hope says, we have a criteria that we have to justify to grant this type of variance.
I understand. You can always try again. I can ask.
Would you like to do that?
I certainly will try again.
So.
Mr. Chairman, in, in that circumstance, it sounds to me like the applicant is asking, requesting that we table this matter for a reasonable period of time to allow, allow the applicant to seek to obtain the, the competent financial evidence that we've indicated is probably the most pressing concern that we, we need here. So based upon that, I would, I would move to table the current application.
We have a motion to table the application, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Call the roll. On the motion.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I know we made a, a motion to yes or no, but we didn't have a discussion. So can we have a discussion before we?
I, I believe that's, I believe that's reasonable. So let's suspend the vote at this moment. And is there a discussion on the motion to table? Till the next meeting?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, this is came in front of us and I think the board here is telling the applicant that to table it. And I didn't hear the, the applicant saying, let's, she wants to table this, this case. She's in front of us proposing what she wanted. And it sounds to me that the board is trying to tell the applicant, we should table her, without her asking the board. And I think the council could help with that if, if she wants. But I think the applicant needed to tell us that she needs this table. But what I heard from the applicant earlier, she's having difficulty to trying to, to even answer a question about the reasonable returns, about the financial stuff. And it sounds like the board is trying to tell her, she needs to go and get that information. And if I heard her correctly, three times, that she's having difficult with the owner of the property to get this information. So I just wanna put that on the record because I think the, the, she didn't ask to table that. And I don't think the board were in that situation to, to volunteer information and, and table stuff. But if the applicant was to say she wanted to table it, I think then we can, we can table it and make a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, since I was the person that made the motion. Just for the record, I, I don't know that the applicant has to request that we move to table it. I think that's the prerogative of the board to move to table something. But I, I certainly did not wanna foreclose the ability of the applicant to move forward with the application as it currently exists with the evidence that's put forward, that she's able to put forward tonight, if she so chooses to do that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. Hope on this here, but I just didn't wanna, I, I wanted to hear that the applicant, that's.
Okay, let, let me see if I, let me see if I can provide a little bit of clarification here. Essentially what, I'll call them your options are, is you are certainly entitled to move this forward tonight for a vote on the use variance based on the information that we have in front of us and your representations and, and what you've provided us. You absolutely have that right to move forward. And all you need to do is say, I, I, I'd like to just move forward on it tonight. Not string it out, not extend it. What I think has been proposed here is that there is some information that would be helpful to this board in terms of reviewing this material. Because you, you're in a situation where you are not the owner and you are not privy to certain information that I think is, is necessary and would help us. So the alternative is if you would request that this matter be tabled to allow you more time to attempt to obtain that information and present it to this board, we will provide you, and it's a motion that has to be voted on, so I'm not saying that it would be granted, but that would be what you would be afforded if that motion is passed to table this, to give you the opportunity. You are the only one, I think, that can determine if that would be potentially fruitful to you. And if so, then you can request that it be tabled. And we have a motion pending to do so, which we can vote on. You can also request that it simply go forward tonight as it's been presented. That's absolutely right.
And if I choose to go ahead and you vote no, am I allowed to come back?
No, not for, not for this same use variance. I would say that in our discussions, I think I've provided you with a roadmap that you don't need a variance.
If we don't put an office in.
Or a bathroom. Correct? That's the roadmap that you've been provided, but I'm not telling you one way or another what you should do. I'm just one member of the board too. So it's your decision on how you would like to handle this. And if you'd like a minute to sort of think it through, we can provide that, but.
Vote on it, please.
Absolutely. At the applicant's request, we're going to move forward, we are going to.
So it, it, the applicant can request the vote to move forward. It's still, there is still a motion pending, the board can still make a motion to table even at the applicant's request. So you do still need to vote on the motion that's pending.
Okay.
Yes.
We do have a motion to table, which is, which is before us. So let's proceed, I believe you would call Mr., only Mr. Hope, is that right?
Correct.
We, we recall it then?
I'm sorry?
Now that there's been discussion, I'd like to have an opportunity to vote after the discussion.
Okay. I, I think that's fair, Mr. Hope would like to, let's, let's start from scratch, do a redo.
Mr. Hope?
No.
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote, uh, no.
Mr. Stein?
I vote no.
Mr. Daly? Mr. Green?
I'm voting on a motion to table.
Correct.
Mr. Antonikowski?
No.
Chairperson Ferrari?
No, the motion to table fails at this point. Are there any other questions by the board for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple more clarification. This is a non-conforming building, as you know. And non-conforming building, that's meaning they were built before the code, the town code.
Yes.
Anything that you need to add to that building, it has to follow the code that we have right now.
Correct.
And this is where a lot of the cases, I've been on the board over 10 years maybe, and we had a lot of cases where people need to rebuild something, redo something. And if this was to be becoming, it passes for use variance and it becomes a business that has everything, then that would make it difficult, even if you sell the building to somebody else, that will go to the new owner. So tell me a little bit about, how big is that building? And just because we don't know enough about that building. I know Mr. Ferrari drove by it, probably Mr. Green. How big is that building? Square feet, I know you gave examples on the other ones. Does anybody know, Laura know?
Maybe on the purchase, there's a diagram on the.
Does it say how big it is?
It's, it's 32 by 66.
I think that's the, that's what they wanted. That's the office, I think.
Yeah.
No, that's the whole.
That's the whole building? How big is it?
32 by 60.
32 feet by 66 feet.
Okay.
The bathroom is six by six.
Hey, can you, can you go back just to clarify to me? You said something about it's gonna cost you 35,000 or 25,000, some wall and so on. What are you doing to that wall?
Inside, we're gonna have a half wall. It's not going all the way up to the ceiling. It's gonna be like a partition selected, a black line there.
Okay, so that's on the inside.
Right.
So Laura is, is, I know when we have in the past, non-conforming, you know, decks and so on. So what would that do when they start trying to? Because there's a percentage, right, on fixing or replacing?
So there is a, oops, oh yeah, there is a percentage in our code that allows you to expand a non-conforming use by 10%.
10%?
Um, so this, this non-conforming use has never expanded, so it would be allowed that 10%. But the, but changing it to the general office wouldn't be covered under that 10% because it allows you to expand the existing non-conforming use. It wouldn't allow you to expand. I just did the calculation, it's, so the 320, oh, yeah, the 320 square feet that's proposed to change is like 6% of the building.
6%?
But you are changing it from a non-conforming use to another non-conforming.
So, so changing from non-conforming to non-conforming, when someday, assuming they wanna come back and build something else on that property, where would that put us to the board if they wanna add apartments in there? If they wanna add something, where would that put us? Because what I don't wanna do, learning from mistakes that we've made before, I don't wanna set precedent so other people could come back and say, well, the board allowed in a non-residential area this and then they can use it against us and it becomes a precedent that we allowed it before.
What a restriction.
Yeah, um, so, yeah. I just, there, if you granted the use variance, then the use of the building would be for, you know, I mean, it's specific to the square footage because it comes down to square footage for non-conforming use. But the interior storage would be limited to the 320 square feet.
And where would that put that property? I don't know the size of the property. Now, we know the size of the, the building, but I don't know the size of the property. Can they say they wanna add some apartments in that property? Can they say?
No.
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 Or would they need another use variance to add that?
We're pretty strict on use variances, if you guys remember. We actually had this conversation with the multifamily guy that came back.
Right.
So this would be all that would be allowed. And then anything further would still need another use variance, cause it's.
Mr. Chairman, am, am I correct though, that the issue of whether a use variance, whether this would actually require a use variance, this would be an increase in the pre-existing non-conforming use? That would be a, a matter that this board could determine. In other words, we could overrule the, the building department's determination with respect to the need for a use variance. This board is, has the power to do this. And I think the argument could be made that, and I think this is what Mr. Latif is getting at, is the fact that because there isn't an, an ability to expand the existing non-conforming use, this isn't an expansion of the non-conforming use, but this really isn't a change in a non-conforming use. You're, you're, you're adding an office to basically a storage facility. That, that, that in and of itself doesn't change the, the use of the property as a storage facility. You're just having a storage facility with an office included in it. And I think this board can make the determination that in fact, it's not an increase in the existing non-conforming use as proposed by the applicant.
The existing non-conforming use that is in play here is a storage facility.
Yes, and, and the applicant envisions it as a.
And the problem is, the addition of office space and a bathroom takes it from being a storage facility to being an office space, which is also a non-conforming use.
Why, I, I just.
Can I finish?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I believe that is what is at the very issue, is that correct, Elena?
So that's what the building department's determination was. Laura, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding. But I think what, if I'm hearing everybody correctly, I think what's being asked is, is it within this board's purview if they disagree with that determination and feel as though there's not a change in use, that the office essentially is incidental to the use? Whether this board could make a motion to overturn that determination? The answer to that would be yes, if the board, if the board choose to do so. But that, you know, differing minds. That would be up for you guys to decide as to whether or not you agree with the building department's interpretation and decision or based on what you hear here tonight, if you feel otherwise.
Similar to the recent cases we've had, whether even a use variance was. cases we've had, whether even a use variance was necessary.
That's exactly what's being, well, I guess asked, is if this board determined that a use variance wasn't even necessary, would they have the ability? You as a board have the ability to overturn the building department's interpretation and decision, and the answer to that would be yes. There would have to be a motion to do it.
We've already done that in prior cases.
I think we did have that recently.
A use variance was needed versus just a simple area variance.
Yes.
We've done that before.
Correct.
Okay. Can we just finish if there's any other questions for the applicant? So we can, we can, and, and get any public comment?
That's what I was gonna say, that I don't wanna forget, even though there's.
Before we move forward with any possible motions, whatever they may be.
Yes, and I also just, I don't wanna forget about this. There does have to be a motion on seeker as well.
I, I've got it written down here. I've got it circled even.
Thank you.
Right there.
Mr. Chairman, can I just confirm the conversation with Laura about the non-conforming, just because I think we have to make sure everybody understand the 10% and the, the changes that we, the applicant is looking to do is only gonna be increased under, it's gonna be under 10%. It's gonna be 6%. So that makes a non-conforming not really over that 10% use.
Well, I think that's actually two different things. I guess the board may consider, I'll be honest, we didn't actually identify that it needed a use variance before it went to the planning board, because when we first reviewed the plan, we didn't notice that it had office area included. But the 6%, I think, may go to whether or not you consider changing 6% of a building to be incidental to the principal non-conforming use right now, which is storage. But I don't think that you could count that 6% towards the expansion of a non-conforming use. I think that's a separate issue. You can overrule me on that as well. But I, I think that's a separate issue. I think the 6% may just go to how, if that's incidental to the principal use enough that it's still really remaining wholly interior storage. I did wanna let you, you guys know that this building has a sister on Aqueduct Road. It's the building that, um, is right across from Rivers Ledge, that just got a second story put on it. And it's in a different zoning district, the OTLI. But essentially, the town got rid of these buildings at the exact same time. And that building, although it didn't need a use variance, it did not, it was not able to stay interior storage. It just didn't. Um, the, the guy that lives there, it's Mattia Construction, and and he's, he's, he used the bottom, the storage area to do, like, restoration work for like proctors and stuff like that. But he ended up having to go back to the planning board multiple times um, to amend that building. They, they were sold together at the same time, indeed restricted for no outdoor storage.
Okay. Okay, thank you. You answered that, but I wanna add one more question, just clarifying this. This property, assuming that storage building, that they wanna take it down. Can they put a house in there? Because if you could put a house, you could have a septic tank, you could have water, you could have all these things. Can you, can you please tell me if this property itself, can a house be built on that property?
If this principal use was demolished and it was essentially vacant again, you could put a house on it. It would be an Elena question. Normally, if the property is vacant, and it's just always been vacant, there's allowances for the homes to go on there, even though the lot wouldn't meet the, the zoning of the time. This lot is not two acres, so it wouldn't meet the rural residential.
So they would have to.
Yeah, possibly it would need an area, area variance for a single family home, because it's not big enough.
All right. That's good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name's Bill Stein. Thank you for being patient tonight. I have one question for you that I kinda wanted to circle back to. You said there would be lighting on the, on the door that faces the trail, basically.
Correct.
So does that mean the loading doors would not have those lights on them?
No.
Okay.
Cuz when the doors go, people would have to go in and open the doors, which the light would come on to load the truck. The trucks come inside, they've loaded, and then go out. So they don't need outside lighting for the trucks.
Thank you. And then Laura, my other question to you is, the current owner is under enforcement. Does that include financial penalties?
Um, it would potentially, depending on how long the notice and order is standing, and then, you know, what the judge decides to do.
Okay, but it's not currently now?
They haven't been served, so no.
Yeah, no. That's Elena's question.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I think it's important to note that, according to the purchase and sale agreement between the applicant and the owner, that the owner is gonna be required to clean the site as part of the, that agreement.
Yeah, the sale agreement.
Any other questions by the board? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? On this, it, on any of these issues? Anyone online? Yes?
Hello, board members.
Please tell us who you are and where you live.
My name is Joey Gentio. I live at 2017 Knot Street in Niskiuna. Professionally, I am a building codes expert for the firm of SGH, operating in Manhattan. Uh, and I am, uh, just happen to be in the audience today, and I'm an expert on the New York State Building Code. And while this may or may not be germane to the discussion uh, in front of the board right now, uh, I can tell you that under the state's building code, when one use exists within another use of a building, and the smaller use is less than 10% of the area of that building, then it can be considered part of the overall occupancy use. Uh, and that may or may not be useful to you in determining how you would like to talk to the building department about their interpretation of whether or not a use variance is needed.
Sorry, and, and that is, uh, you're citing to the New York State Building Code, is that correct?
Yes, chapter four of the building code, rather, chapter three of the building code, which I could pull up a citation on the phone, would say, when a sub-use within a building becomes something that must be addressed under the code as a separate, under the building code, sorry, as a separate use, rather than uh, part of that overall use.
And that was under a certain percentage threshold, correct, under 10%?
Yeah, there's a 10% threshold that comes out of the IBC model code that's adopted by the state of New York.
That's exactly what I was getting at earlier.
Well, let's, let's, let's be cautious here when we're applying the building code and the zoning ordinance, okay? I, I understand the exuberance, but let's be very cautious because we, as far as I know, I don't know the interplay between the two, and so we're dealing with the zoning ordinance in the town code right now.
Right.
But thank you for that.
Providing a piece of information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've reached the point where we as we have in the past, I think the seminal question is, or at least I understand, is whether in fact, this board feels that this requires a use variance at all.
I think that's the, the seminal fact, that I guess, I guess for a procedural, uh, procedural question, that that would be entertained on a motion to annul the.
No, it's, it's simply, it, it, we're, we're not annuling anything. What we are, the building.
It's essentially overturning the interpretation of the building department. And I think just from a procedural standpoint, normally, we would do seeker first, but since that question is on the table, I think it would make sense.
Seeker would only be required if it was a use variance. So seeker approval or a seeker vote is not necessary if there's not a use variance.
Correct.
So I guess I just ask that we put seeker on the back burner for right now.
I think that makes sense.
Okay. So we are at the point where we will entertain a motion if one is to be made.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would, uh, like to make a motion with, uh, due respect to the, uh, Building and Codes Department. I believe in this particular instance, the, um, use that's proposed, the additional use that's proposed is incidental to the overall, uh, use of the building as a storage facility. My understanding that the essential character of the building um, will not be, um, disturbed and will continue to be used as a storage facility. And in fact, um, its use as a storage facility will have less intensive use than it's currently, uh, being used for. And that, that would constitute approximately 94% of the overall use of the building would be for, um, storage. While, while it is understood that there would be a incidental office and bathroom, um, installed in the existing non-conforming use, uh, I would respectfully submit that I believe that that's incidental to the overall um, use as a, a storage facility. Therefore, I would respectfully, um, look to overturn the determination that a use variance is necessi-, the applicant requires a use variance. That would be my motion.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'm in a second motion.
Discussion on the motion, and I'm going to lead the question of a discussion. We are in a conundrum right now where we have an occupant who is not supposed to be storing things outside, but it is a disaster outside this building. Are we able to somehow qualify this to, to confirm that there is, other than possibly a vehicle and a trailer, there is nothing to be stored outside?
Well, Elena, let me know if you disagree. But my recommendation would be that that actually would go to site plan, but you guys could make a, a note to the planning board, which they're very respectful of. And the planning board would, as a regular point of conditions of site plan review, which they did with the sister building as well, cannot allow outdoor storage on the site in perpetuity.
And I think the applicant's been very clear that her, her materials and product has to be inside. But that may have been what the concrete company said too, so. I just wanna make sure that, that my suggestion would be that we, in addition that a use variance not be necessary, that we make a recommendation to the planning board that, that as part of their approval process, that may, they make sure that the ex-, there is no exterior storage other than simply parking veh-, parking a vehicle or vehicles or trailer in that location.
I, I, I would agree with that. I don't know procedurally if you would like that to be a part of the motion that's pending.
I don't think it can be a part of the motion that's pending, because if the decision ends up being that a use variance isn't necessary, then technically, there's nothing being handed down from this board other than, but we can certainly have the recommendation passed on to the planning board.
Let's just, let, we'll, we'll deal with that after we vote on this motion.
Okay.
So we have, is everybody clear on what the motion is?
If I could, the answer is yes, but if I could just hear it restated one more time.
Let me see. The, the motion is basically that this board is overriding, for the, for lack of a better term, the determination.
Respectfully.
Respectfully, thank you. Respectfully overriding the determination by the Building and Code Department that a use variance was needed uh, on this property for the, uh, intended alterations of addition of a bathroom and an office space, which this board feels is incidental to the storage facility that's currently the, in place.
That's, that's my motion, and, and it's based upon the fact that we contemplated changes amount to 6% of the overall, um, floor space.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hope. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are everybody clear on the motion that we are now voting on? Let's please call the roll.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
I find this a unique situation, but on this motion, I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Ferrari?
I will also vote yes, and, uh, that motion has been carried. There is not the need for a use variance for this particular property, as stated, or a, uh, approval of the seeker recommendation. I, I guess we can say congratulations and good luck with your project. I would, however, request that, um, the building department, obviously, this is not in the form of a motion, but a request that the building department very clearly pass along to the, respectfully pass along to the planning board that to avoid the problem that we have on the property now, that as part of their review, they assure or make sure that the applicant understands that, that there is no storage of materials outside, and that the extent of the outside storage would be simply a vehicle or two or trailer as needed.
I promise you, it'll stay nice.
We're gonna hold you to that.
Oh, anytime.
All right?
Very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Yeah. As a, as a point of clarification to that, I, I would also even go further on Jackson demolition. Sometimes there was a problem with vehicles that couldn't move still being parked outside, which is not really storage, but, um, you know, with you guys' permission, I think the intent is that no outdoor storage and the vehicles that are parked there are operational.
Right. Understood. I think that's.
I mean, just so that goes with the property even, make sure that they are licensed.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Call the next case.
The appeal of Ian Natoli for variance from section 220-18B3B in section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna as it applies to the property at 1154 Country Club Drive North, Niskiuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density zoning district to maintain a 10-foot by 14-foot shed partially within the side and rear yard setbacks. Section 220-18B3B states that the, the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structure shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures are detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The shed at 140 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC establishes the side setback minimum of 15 feet and the rear setback minimum of 20 feet. As constructed, the shed is located 4 feet from the side property line and 10 feet from the rear property line. Therefore, both an 11-foot side yard setback variance and a 10-foot rear yard setback variance are required. 13 letters were mailed, 2 responses.
To whom it may concern, I am writing in response to the letter I received regarding the shed on the property behind my house. Ian Natoli, 1154 North Country Club Drive, built the structure himself, and I have no problem at all with it. It is not affecting my life in any way. So I just wanted to put that down for the record. Sincerely, Nancy Okonski, 1149 Millington Road. To whom it may concern, I have received notification of Ian Natoli's appeal for a variance regarding his shed at 1154 North Country Club Drive. I live directly behind him at 1153 Millington Road, and I am writing in support of Ian maintaining his shed. Thank you, Katie Keller-Herr. and I am writing in support of Ian maintaining his shed. Thank you, Katie Keller-Herr.
I'm sorry, what were the addresses of the two people?
Oops, 1149 and 1153, and Linda made a map for you guys. Would you like it?
Love it. You could just.
So green is the address and pink is the letters.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant online?
So the applicant is online by phone. They may need to press star six to unmute themselves. There was some feedback and I had to mute them. There you are. Go ahead. We'll hear you now.
Ian Natoli is present.
Can you please give us your name, your address, and tell us a little bit about your application for a variance?
My name is Ian Natoli. I live in 1154 North Country Club Drive. And my variance is for a shed that's 10 by 14 in the back of my property.
What are you looking to put up?
It's already up.
I'm sorry?
It's already up.
Okay. Tell us what's already up.
A 10 by 14 shed.
Did you have a prior shed there that you replaced, or is this a new structure?
No, it was replaced. It was actually, I used a lot of the old shed for the, for the build of the new one. So like a renovation.
Where the old shed was, was it in the same location, different location?
Same exact location, just, it's just bigger now.
Okay. So essentially, it's not on the same footprint, but part of it is and part of it is not. Tell us how much, how much bigger the current shed is than the old one?
That I can't be sure of, but I think the old one, if I could remember, it was like 10 by 12 or close to around there. I'm try, I could probably fit prior three lawn mowers across.
Was this shed? I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
How long have you lived at the property?
I lived there for about six, seven years. My wife lived there for, I don't know, 10?
Was the old shed there when you bought the property?
I'm sorry, 15. She just, she corrected me.
Was the old shed there when she purchased the property?
Yes.
So it was there at some point in time before she moved in, the shed was, the old shed was put in place?
Correct.
And why did you need a new shed?
It was falling apart and I needed more space.
Okay. How did this come to our attention?
Good question.
So the, the building permit was submitted and approved, but on the application, it was submitted with compliant setbacks. And upon renewal, the building inspector and the applicant arrived at the fact that the setbacks were actually not compliant. So it was during the renewal process.
Were you aware of the setback requirements when the shed was constructed?
No.
Okay. Did you construct the shed, or did someone do it for you?
No, I did.
Okay. It sounds like when the building permit was applied for, the shed was in a different location than it is now?
No. So when I was building it, I was, it was pretty much almost built when I applied for the shed, for the permit. I didn't know I needed a permit, to tell you the truth, because I was just, I thought I was just renovating my old shed. And then I put in the permit. I originally put in for the location where it was. But the building inspector said, because of the property line, you have to move it. So it's not like this much to the property line or that much to the property line. So I said, fine. And then I decided that I didn't want, I didn't want to move it anymore. I didn't want to move to the middle of my yard.
Okay, Laura, I thought you said that when the building permit was applied for, the side and rear yard setbacks were appropriate?
Initially. So it was issued with appropriate setbacks. And then it came up for renewal, and then the building inspector was discussing it with the applicant as built. And the applicant stated that the setbacks were, in fact, the four and 10. So at that point, the building inspector had to deny it because they were essentially requesting nonconforming setbacks, changing the building permit.
Okay. So Mr. Natoli, I'm, I'm a little confused when you apply, did you apply for the building permit?
I did.
And did you put on the building permit, or with the building permit, the location of the shed?
So I, if I recall, I had it where it was, and then I had it that I was going to move it, but I never moved it.
Did you hear Ms. Robertson's explanation that the building permit, as it was originally submitted, was in compliance with the rear yard and side yard setbacks? Did you hear that?
I did.
Did you build it in accordance with the original building permit?
So in theory, it was already built before I put the application in.
Okay. I'm still trying to understand why the shed as built did not comply with what was submitted with the building permit?
So because it was too big. So the original permit had, had the, had the actual shed in the middle of the yard or closer, closer to the end of the yard, but I didn't build it that way.
Okay. Did you feel you needed to?
So what do you mean, do I feel that I needed to?
Well, in other words, you submitted a building permit with some type of plan or some type of location that in fact complied with the zoning ordinances for Niskuna. That's not where you built it. Why not?
Correct. Because I originally, so, because the way the shed was originally, because I didn't move it, because the way I built it was where the original one was, it was just a little bigger.
I, I understand that, and there was a reason behind my questions, but the issue is, because it's bigger, it now needs to comply, if needed to comply with the side and rear yard setbacks. Do you understand that?
I do understand that.
All right. Other questions by the board?
Mr. Natoli, if I could just summarize my understanding of how the, the building permit came about. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you built the shed first, correct?
Correct, and I'm pretty sure my neighbor complained about it.
Mr. Natoli, I just want to go through this. You built the shed first before you came down to the Building Department, correct?
Correct. It was like nine tenths complete.
Okay. And how did you find out that you had to come to the Building Department?
Because Tom physically came to my property.
Okay. So at that point, you came to the Building Department and you put it in an application, correct?
Correct.
And at the time you put in the application, somebody told you that there were these setbacks, correct?
So, correct. That's exactly what happened. So when I put it in, Tom was like, oh no. He was like, no.
Mr. Natoli, just get through my questioning, so I just have a, a clear understanding here. At the time that you were told what the setbacks were, you submitted the application with the shed in a alternate location on the application because you were told you had to comply with the setbacks, right?
Do you want me, do you want me to reply?
Well, it's just yes or no.
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then you went home and you contemplated it. And given the fact that the shed was already built and not in that location, you determined that you had to apply for a variance, correct?
Correct. That's exactly correct what happened.
Okay. Why couldn't you put the shed in the middle of your backyard?
Because it'd be a challenge to move it, to tell you the truth, and I, and I don't want it there.
Why, why, you said it would be a pain to move it?
I mean, the shed, I mean.
Can you describe what you'd have to do to move it?
There's a few ways I would think. I mean, remember, I'm a homeowner. I'm not a, you know, what I probably would do is I would jack it up and then put on some PVCs and roll it, to tell you the truth.
Okay. And would you be able to do, what kind of equipment would you need to do that?
A couple jacks, PVC pipes, and I don't know, 10 people.
Okay. And you indicated that, so it's possible that you could do that, correct, with you, with your abilities?
My, by myself? No. I mean, I would have, it'd be a challenge. I mean, probably not, no.
Okay. Is there any other reason besides the inconvenience of moving it that would be a reason why you would not want it in your back, in the middle of your backyard?
I mean, I have a couple dogs back there too. I mean, and the yard slope, I mean, it'd be a challenge.
All right, Mr. Natoli. So tell me about the yard slope. What do you mean by that?
The grade of the backyard.
Okay. So if you put the shed in the middle of the backyard, would the prop, would, would the slope of the property accommodate the shed in a new location?
Oh, true, because I have a sub pump back there.
Mrs. Natoli, I couldn't hear a word you said. Could you repeat that?
I said, probably not, because I also would have, there's a sub pump on the other side of the, there's a sub pump that water floods, floods that area of the yard.
Okay. So, so the, in terms of the, the ground itself would be soft, then it would be difficult to locate the, the shed at that location as well for that reason, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. And with respect to your neighbors, I know you have two neighbors that are directly behind your property. They supported your application. Has anybody indicated to you that they were not in support of your application?
So no one physically has. Not, not that I know of, no.
Okay. And the, the shed as it exists now, exists in the same footprint as a pre-existing shed, except that it is larger, correct?
Correct.
How much larger is it than the existing, the, the, the original shed?
The, don't quote me, but the original shed didn't need a, didn't need a permit. So I'm assuming 20, probably, the new one's probably 20 square feet bigger.
20 square feet bigger. Okay. All right, Mrs. Natoli, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Stein, Mr. Natoli, I just have one or two quick questions for you. If you did need to relocate that sump pump, would that cause water problems to other neighbors?
I mean, where would you like me to move it? I mean, the, where would you like me to move it to?
If you had to though, would it prob, would it cause problems to other neighbors?
I mean, I mean, I mean, so if you're familiar with Niskuna, we, where we are, we get a lot of water. That sub pump continually goes. So I mean, no matter where you put it, the sub pump, you know, it's good, the water's going to go, you know, somewhere, right? So probably, yes.
Okay. So just let me make sure I understand you. If you had to move it to be conforming, the sump pump would then have to relocate, and the sump pump would be flooding someone else's property potentially?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Laura, we don't have any indication that the prior, and there was any variance granted for the prior shed, do we?
No, Tom pretty much always checks that, and he would have, he would have noted that to me.
Okay. Other questions by the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Natoli, I'm Richard Green. How are you this evening?
Good. How are you?
I'm good. Could you talk to me a little bit about the, the neighborhood? Are there other similar type sheds in relative physical proximity to your, to your home?
Sure, absolutely. So if you're, so my house is across the street from the golf course. So if you're, they're both, both my neighbors that are right and left, they both have garages that are twice as big of, big as my shed. I don't have a garage. And then my neighbor directly behind me, those two that wrote a letter, Nancy and Katie, they both have sheds that are probably, probably eight by eight, both of them, that want, they're both eight by eight, but they both have garages as well. And there's, so my shed is right, right in front of Nancy's shed.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
That, that's good. I get it. There are other sheds in the neighborhood, right?
Correct, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions by the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. I look at the chart that we have, and it looks like one side is 10 feet and one side is 14 feet. The 14 feet and then next to it, 30 feet to the fence. Do you have a fence back there?
I do.
You do. And how many feet from the left side to that fence? Five feet, four feet? Because I know you said in your application, you don't know where exactly the line is.
Correct. So I don't know, so it's, I don't know what the, the property lines of my, of the property are. At one point, I got a surveyor, and he, he said it was going to be very challenging and cost me a lot of money. So I, so I just, I just, I just was going to go by the fence.
Okay.
On that, that property.
Okay. Let me, let me ask you this question. To the left side, when you replaced the old shed, did you move it at all to, to the left?
No, I didn't.
You didn't? So you left it?
No.
From the left side, you left the shed exactly on that print, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the only, the only, how about from the back? Is that still what you had it with the old shed?
Yeah, exactly.
The distance?
Correct.
So the only?
It's the same, it's the same exact from, from the back and the side.
Okay. So the only, the only spot that it's extended two feet is to the right, and you still have 30 feet away from that fence, correct?
Give or take.
Okay. Tell me a little bit about that roof that you have, and what's behind your house, behind that shed?
Behind that shed?
Yes.
So it's, it's partial, it's dirt. It's partial, it's.
So there's any water, any water problems?
Any water?
Yeah.
No.
That, there? There's no water. And how about the heights of the shed?
The height of the shed? Good question. So probably, I mean, I'm not sure.
Okay, that's okay. Which, which way is, which way is the roof? Is it exactly like the picture? The roof is tilted to the sides?
The roof is, it's, it's, I'm not, I'm not seeing what you, I'm not, what pictures do you have? I'm, I don't know.
Okay. Is it front and back, the roof?
Yeah, 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 front, back, yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay. And tell us a little bit about, Mr. Hoke asked you that, about the back of your property. You said there's water, there's, it's tilted a little bit. And also, tell us a little bit, if you were to move it a couple more feet, is that possible?
A couple, I mean, anything's possible, right? I mean, I mean, I don't know if I can move it without breaking it, but I mean.
Okay. Did you, did you get a, did you get an estimate how much it would cost you if you have to move it?
So there's no estimate. I'm the estimate. I do everything myself.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you. You answered my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions by the board? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience or online that wishes to be heard regarding the application? Hearing none. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to approve the two setbacks, the variances for the two setbacks as noted. Given consideration to that the homeowner is putting the shed on, or where an existing shed was that did not require a variance. This one is only 20 feet larger, and as the homeowner said, he's only moving it 20 feet closer to the right. And due to difficulties he would have with water drain off, that I do understand as, as an Niskuna homeowner and myself, that moving the shed would create some difficulties. So I would, I would motion that we would grant the variances.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that for the reasons just stated.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Mr. Hoke?
I'll, I'll vote yes. I would note that the applicant doesn't have a garage. It is a home, and, you know, has, has requested the variance for additional storage. There's, without the garage, there is a need for additional storage at the property. There's additional sheds in the neighborhood, and this won't affect the character of the neighborhood by virtue of the installation of this shed for the reasons that Mr. Stein indicated. I don't find this to be a substantial, substantial request. I would note that it is somewhat concerning that the, that the, the shed was constructed prior to obtaining a building permit. But this particular case, which could impact the, my analysis with respect to this being a self-created hardship, but in this particular case, I don't believe that the applicant, I think the applicant acted in good faith with respect to obtaining a building permit and subsequently seeking a variance. So for those reasons, I vote yes of the motion.
Let me jump in just for a second for clarification. Mr. Stein, you were dealing with both the variances together, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I apologize for not asking sooner.
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes, and I'm gonna give my reason. The benefit can't be achieved by other means by the applicant because the shed was already an existing. Unfortunately, our town code specifically goes about, if it's 120 feet, then it's five feet from the sides where the shed was 10 by 14, a little bigger. So that requires the shed to be moved away from the building. But from the past, we had a similar situation with sheds, and people can't put the shed in the middle of the back of their property. And more reason for this applicant, that he has water issues in the back, and he has other means to use his backyard. And as quoted before, he doesn't have a garage, so he needed a bigger garage to store his stuff. Is the request substantial? It's not substantial. It's only two feet more. So the only thing substantial here is the side setback. Whether requests will have adverse physical environment effect, it will not have any effect. There was a shed there before, and that shed seemed to fit in the same spot where it was before. Does it cause any undesirable to the neighborhood, as quoted before? There's other neighbors, they do have sheds in the neighborhood, and it's similar where the applicant has placed his. For all these reasons, what was stated before, I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stein?
I vote yes, as the reason stated before.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated, and if not stated, one of the factors I also consider is the responses that were provided from the neighbors, including the one most intimately affected, who was supportive of the passage of this application. So I vote yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Frere?
Yes, for all the reasons stated. Congratulations, sir. Your variance is granted.
Oh, thank you. Is there anything else I have to do?
You're gonna need to renew the permit, and I'll let you know next week.
Yep. The building department will call, will contact you.
Are they gonna hit me up for more money?
Probably so.
Can I get a variance on that too?
No. No variance on that. Be happy though. You got your variance. Congratulations.
Take it easy, bye.
Is there anything, anything else, any other business to bring up? Our next meeting is?
March 15th.
March 15th. And nothing else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Seconded by Mr. Hoke. Voice vote, all in favor? All opposed. We are adjourned.
Okay.